Yep, we're good to go.
All right, good evening, everyone. Sorry for a little bit of a delay on technical things, but welcome to our work session this evening. First order of our business is to approve our April 9th work session minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Over.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion passes. First item is just a short discussion on boards and commissions. I just want to let everybody know what I'm thinking on that. You know, historically, we've done our board and commission appointments and reappointments in June. And for this year, because of these circumstances, most of the boards have not even met since February. Did not meet in March, April, and who knows if they would have met in May. For that reason, and also, you know, to give us more time, volunteer profiles, my plan is to just hold off making nominations for appointments and reappointments until August. So, you know, people who are on there can complete the last few months of the terms and then go for reappointments as well. So, I just wanted to, no, we do that in May, but I think this year I'm going to hold off and do that in July. So, I just want to let council know that, see if there's any questions or comments on it. All right, then, seeing none with that, we'll continue our discussion that we started last week on the budget. First, you know, we spent time, last work session on, Russ gave us some proposed budget adjustments, and I just wanted to ask if there's any questions or comments on those. Just give Russ the, I mean, really the okay to move forward. Are there any comments or questions on the proposed amendments we got last week? Councilmember Litzel.
I don't know if I'm first tonight, how we're doing this.
Yeah, you're first. That's from Lorraine Amy. You're first.
Well, I, for us, I'm sorry if I'm making you repeat yourself. I don't remember on the, under the general fund for forestry, building and grounds maintenance, $120,000. What's that about?
I don't know what Bill. Bill's gotten deep into that specifically, and he worked with Corey on that. So, Bill, go ahead and explain.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Success so far. Basically, that was the.
Okay, you're freezing up.
We were going to, and to increase tree pruning to.
Yeah, Bill's freezing up.
Freezing up.
Buffering or frozen, Bill.
Am I freezing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Could try calling in for your audio.
Okay, I will do that.
You're going to want to mute the other one.
All right.
Nancy, while Bill's connecting.
Yeah.
Do you want to ask any other questions you might have?
Well, yeah, but they might be Bill's questions, too. Um. On the capital improvements, the mini pumper.
Yes.
So, I think that had to do with serving residents, like along Sugar Creek Valley, where there are those small bridges where our big equipment can't get. Primarily, I'm guessing that there's more of a use for it than the residents along Adams there. But I'm just, so I'm just wondering, that's a big outlay, and I can see, you know, possibly deferring it, but I just want to make sure that it's not going to hamper the mission of fire department or other regional reciprocal agreements that might possibly be relying on that as well.
No, the service levels of the department are not hampered by not having that. What it really does by having it is it extends the life of our aerial unit. The aerial unit responds to every call that comes out of departments, out of Firehouse 3. So, this would allow the aerial unit to sit. It costs a huge amount of money to move that aerial unit. The tires alone are $15,000 apiece. So, you don't want to drive it very much. That's the reason that the mini pumper was spec'd. It's really not, it's not a service issue, according to Silver Nail, and the mini pumper can wait a year. It just means that when there are calls coming out of 3, it's going to still be the aerial unit while we're waiting before we purchase the mini pumper. Also, the mini pumper takes about a year to build. So, we wouldn't even have it delivered until this time next year if we ordered it today.
Okay, well, then, maybe you don't look to be purchasing it until FY '22 then, or?
Correct.
Yeah. And it's, well, and if one of the other reasons for getting the mini was to save on the full-size aerial.
That's correct.
Um. You're okay with sending the full-size aerial in the meantime?
It's, to me, that's a, to Jim Silver Nail, that's probably the smarter thing to do than to commit to that mini pumper in the situation that we're in now.
Okay. Also, under capital improvements, while we're there, the Bobcat Skid steer, I'm guessing that's the $45,000, I think it was. That's in addition to the one that we approved for 38 that Wallace had taken.
No, no, no. It is the one that was approved. It's just we're not going to buy it.
Oh, okay. I thought I saw $45,000 on the budget thing, and the one, the other one was 38,000.
The 45, I think, is with contingency and so forth, but the 38 is what the actual cost of that vehicle is if we were to buy it today.
Okay.
So, we're not looking to do that. We're going to hold on to our cash.
Okay. Okay, so, but you do have council approval to purchase that, right?
We do.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's my decision not to do it. That's what I was informing council of last week, because these are all my recommendations and my decisions as to what to hold on. Now, I'm not saying that we wouldn't get that Bobcat Skid steer if ours broke down or something, but we've got an operating piece of equipment right now. And Wallace brought up a good point. You can rent one, and we got rental costs on it. It's about $1,200 a month, so I can rent one for a year for $14,400.
Okay, okay. It just, I wasn't clear, because it said 40,000, 45,500, and it looked like maybe we were talking about another one. And I was just wondering if departments could share if we're going to have more than one. Okay.
The 45,500 is the budgeted cost.
Okay, okay. So, oh, God, now we're getting an echo of me. Bill, are you?
Bill's, Bill.
It might be Bill with the echo, because he's got two modes of audio. One of them has to go.
Bill's talking, but we can't hear you, Bill.
Is Freddie controlling his mute?
Yeah, I'll mute Bill for a second there, Fred.
You're.
Yeah, hang loose for one second, everyone.
The mute is on, on Bill.
Yeah.
I'm working to get Bill audio.
Good.
Um, all right, so, I know there was a note about, about park board issues, Russ, and the Performing Arts Center, and I've heard that Stages is not going to do two of their shows this year because of the stay-at-home orders. And I'm just wondering about the PAC bonds. If that's something up for discussion in this arena.
Not really, not really up for discussion at this point. It's unfortunate that Stages is not going to be able to have its shows. We are working with Stages on the last show as to whether they'll be able to perform that or not. We don't know. That would be in September. Certainly, there may be more opportunity to have events of that nature, particularly if there is some social distancing or scaled type of attendance by that time. But that's a huge question mark right now.
Yeah, okay. Hi, Bill.
Bill, are you back yet?
I think. Maybe not. Well, I was just wondering what that's about, forestry, for the $120,000 for forestry, and it sounds like early pruning and not really something that's critical.
That's my understanding. That's what I wanted to.
All right. Okay, okay, thanks. I'm done.
We have, anyone else on this? I'll go down the list. Maggie, anything?
And you may have already answered this, so I apologize if you have. Under police, under capital improvement, under police, 1636, what does that mean?
That's vehicles, patrol vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, for whatever reason, the word vehicles didn't make it onto the spreadsheet. I apologize for that.
No problem. Thanks.
All right. Ellen, anything?
Yeah, I'm still concerned about the pavement striping. I, for that amount of money, which I know nothing is inconsequential right now, but it just seems like that could have a pretty outsized impact on safety for that investment.
I mean, that's a valid, it's a valid concern.
So, I'm thinking I'm probably not in favor of that particular item. And I would, would rather we look for something else. I don't know if that means I need to just start going through the budget and proposing a bunch of things to you, Russ, to see if any of them are, you know, reasonable or not, because I'm actually feeling like I'm a person who wants to cut a lot, because I don't know where we're going with this, and it could be, could be serious. But this is just one area that I'm afraid we, you know, that we shouldn't cut.
You know, Ellen, we are, I mean, that makes sense when that came up, because we are continuing to move forward with our streets, you know, this year. So, I personally, I would have no problem keeping that in. And secondly, being mentioned, cutting the budget, again, this is going to be an ongoing process, and what we do tonight doesn't mean we can't do more or less next week, two weeks, three weeks.
Right.
So, everyone has, you know, please keep looking through things, because as this changes, we'll have every opportunity to discuss this and make appropriate budget changes. So, is anyone else, just before, Ellen, just while we're talking about that, does anyone else have any issues with, you know, keeping the pavement striping 60,000 in the budget this year?
I think it should be kept, too.
I think we should make every effort to keep it in the budget.
Yeah.
Agreed.
All right, well, we'll take it out of this list then. That's no problem.
Wallace, did you ever hand up on that?
Yeah, I just wanted some clarification. So, we're doing, we're doing some third-party striping, and we're doing some in-house striping. What is this comprised of, the 60,000?
I'm pretty sure this is a third-party striping.
So, we could, so, so the concerns that Ellen and Kara have, we might be able to take care of with in-house striping.
I believe, Bill, can you?
Oh, he's back.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, all right.
You got a big echo there, Bill.
That's really bad.
Got a chalkboard, Bill. You can just write it up.
Can you hear, can you still hear me?
That's better, yeah.
Yes, now I can.
Okay, great. All right. The, we, that is, that's outsourced, that, the 60,000 is strictly outsourcing of the pavement striping. We only have one person that does pavement striping, so we cannot, we just do touch-up work, and that's it. We don't do full-scale striping. We don't have the equipment or the manpower.
So, Bill, is it a safety issue with regard to this outsourcing, or what are they looking to do?
It's recapping. It's going and doing, we do try to do one side of the city every two or three years to recap faded lines. So, we'll be looking at faded lines on one side of the city to do that. That's all that 60,000 does, because if we recapped every year, it'd be more in the $100,000 range.
So, is it possible for us to abandon the geography in that process and just get after those that are in worst condition?
Yes, we would, that's what we'll be looking at. We will not have enough money to do all the worst stuff.
Can you do the worst of the worst?
We'll leave it up to the guys in the field to determine that.
Okay.
All right, anything else on that particular item, pavement striping? All right, Russ, well, then, I think you.
Yep, got clear direction on that. We'll remove it from this list and put it back into the funded budget.
All right. Ellen, you, I interrupted you.
Oh, yeah, okay. No, that's okay. Yeah, I guess the other thing that I was, you know, wondering about, we'll just have to take up with sanitation, you know, when we have that general discussion.
Yeah, that'll be next after. Okay. Anything else, Ellen?
Oh, yeah, you know, I get, you know, I, I have concerns about spending more of the reserves than we were. You know, we budgeted some for the reserves, and I realize that that is not something we can answer tonight. But I just want to bring that up, because so far, we're counting on spending more money from the general fund reserves, mainly is the main one I'm concerned about. And my feeling is we don't really know how bad things are going to get. And I just feel conservative by nature in this, that it's a concern to be spending that when we don't really know how bad things are going to get. We may need it more later. And it's going to potentially be a while before we can reconstitute a fund balance.
As the mayor said, this is a work in progress. I want to emphasize that we're looking at everything, everything's on the board right now. I mean, we've talked about furloughs, we've talked about layoffs, we've talked about, you know, priorities of positions. We've talked about any number of approaches to this. What this is, is a way to cut some of the clear capital, pretty much almost entirely capital, except for the little bits in the general fund, that allows us an ability to maneuver with what we see as it happens. In other words, we're working to mitigate a projected $2 million shortfall in funding. This is a start in that direction. Whether this is where we end up, I cannot answer at this point. And certainly, the use of fund balance is worthy of discussion, and overuse of it would certainly be a concern.
Well, and I, I understand that, Russ, and I, you know, I think it's very fair the way you're starting. I really didn't mean it as a criticism, just as.
Oh, I didn't take it as such. I'm just trying to clarify.
Yeah, right. And I just want it to be a consideration while we're looking, you know, a reason to be looking for whatever we can, because I just feel that in such great uncertainty, I hate to go into our rainy day money too soon. So, I will leave it at that.
And it is a very rainy day, isn't it? I mean, seriously.
I would say it's kind of pouring.
Yeah.
Okay. Our lightning and everything.
Yeah, our tornado fund, I should have said.
Anything else, Ellen?
No, thank you.
Anything on this particular discussion on the budget amendments?
No, I don't have any other comments. Just thank you, Russ. You answered one of my questions from before. As far as the general fund reserves, it's 2.6 million. What percentage of the reserves is that, Russ? And how long would that last?
Well, first of all, we don't expect, as we say in the budget, that budgeted use of reserves is not actually what we expect to use of reserves. We only spend about 95% of the budget typically year to year. In this case, I expect us to be less than 95% of the budget, because we're cutting the budget. You know, the reserves were 11 million.
Okay.
And that's the cash reserves at the end of last fiscal year. I'm not sure where they are at the end of this fiscal year, because we don't have our audited numbers yet. But they're going to be in the similar range. They're going to be about 11 million, so 2.611 is about 24%.
Yeah. So, it's a quarter of it.
It'd be 25%.
Yeah, okay. Well, I know it's, I know it's hard to try and determine what we can live without and what we can hold on our spending. I think we're, I think we're being very proactive, considering this is much more than a rainy day. This is an unprecedented time that we live in, and I think, you know, we're doing all that we can. And I commend you for going through this, and it's a good start. So, thank you.
Wallace, anything on the proposed amendments adjustments?
Well, you know, I'm kind of in line with Ellen. I would prefer, because it's difficult to unspend money, I would prefer that we were a little more aggressive in reduction of expenditures early on in this process, rather than having more of a look-and-see approach, because that does, that does jeopardize the sanctity of the reserve fund for a true rainy day. I think it's potential for this thing to get biblical in terms of rainfall here in our future. One of the things that I would suggest that we do, that was former Councilman Ward's trying to call me. I would suggest, we have a very talented group of financiers in our citizen finance group. And I think it would be, it would be prudent for the council to task them to, to take a look at not only local, state, federal, but also some global economic forecasts to give us a better chance of understanding where we might go and some of the choices we might be facing. So, I think that it would be timely to get them on board as quickly as possible and get them to look at things out there. You know, Pat Kelly, the president of Municipal League, was on the radio yesterday and was urging municipalities to consider as much as a 50% reduction in revenues. So, there's quite a range of opinions out there as to where things are going to go. And I don't think we're going to have too many eyes taking a look at this for us.
All right. Russ and I kind of talked about that last week or so, so thank you, Wallace, for bringing that up for us again. All right, Kara, anything on this?
Yeah, just a few things, you know, as you guys know, I do forecasting and budget in my day job. So, it's been kind of depressing to have to do this in this aspect as well. But I do want to point out, too, you know, we're talking about maybe these aren't enough cuts. We do have a hiring freeze right now, and, you know, I've reached out to us to see if maybe we can get kind of some savings already that we're seeing on that, on things that we aren't paying salaries or benefits for already, and where we might see that continue in the first quarter. And, you know, it is, it is real difficult right now that until we get revenues from March, there's no way to really forecast how it's going to affect us April and May. And given all of that, I think these are the right first round of cuts to be making. Obviously, taking out the pavement striping, as we discussed earlier. But I think, I guess that was it. Shoot, I was writing notes. I forgot.
I can answer Ms. Wertz's question, too, concerning the effect of the hiring freeze.
Yeah.
That hiring freeze equates to $480,000 saved over the year.
Okay, so that's, that's not a small chunk of change by, by any means.
No, we're contemplating another means for another $400,000, so we'd almost be at a million for, for, from the personnel side, without actually laying off or furloughing anybody.
Excellent. And that's another thing I really want to make sure that we, we keep, keep supporting the staff we have, because I think we really do have a great, great group of workers, and that's very much a last-case scenario in my kind of book. So, other than that, great job, and thank you.
We, the Metro Mayor's group that I'm part of, we had another meeting, video meeting today, we did one last week. And, you know, cities are doing different things. Wallace mentioned Pat Kelly, 50%. You know, we talked today, some are, you know, using just estimates of 20% cuts in revenue, some are more than 50. Cities are, everyone is struggling to do what, you know, what is, what is right, knowing this is just a moving target. So, I think, you know, based on what I'm seeing and hearing, I think we're on the, we're on the right path, just knowing that this is just going to be fluid, and we're taking a look at it, and.
And I would also add, Mayor, if I could, that cities' financing structures are all different. Some will have a 50% cut, because they rely more heavily on sales tax and sales tax-generated revenue streams. Whereas, City of Kirkwood does have a property tax, City of DePere does not. City of DePere relies heavily on its mall, and the mall is closed. So, those types of idiosyncratic issues, I know I talked with the city manager of Richmond Heights, where the Galleria is, and they have some heavy dependency on sales tax there. So, that's, I think we're fortunate in Kirkwood that we have a fairly well-diversified revenue stream that we don't rely, you know, is heavily on sales taxes, other venues, too.
All right, very, very good. Okay.
Say one more.
Oh, sure, Nancy.
Well, I, and in this mix, though, I mean, the whole procurement and bidding process is like a pretty long lead time on so many big projects. So, I mean, I would, I would imagine that staff is going to also be weighing all of that in things, because if we were to cut certain things, it could, it could hamper it happening, you know, sort of long-term, I think. So. Yeah, that, you know, I would, I mean, some things are already in the pipeline. But I, you know, there, there is that whole, you know, procurement bidding process that, that a lot of things are required, for even for smaller purchases and not even big projects. So, you know, I think a measured approach and constantly looking at things is a good way of attacking it. That's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let me then go on to the next part of this discussion. One of the things obviously we've been dealing with a couple of years with the curb site or just the recycling market and sanitation in general. So, I know it came up last week. So, Russ and Bill, I know you, you've got some information you sent to us regarding sanitation, recycling, et cetera. So, do you want to, why don't you go ahead and start and, you know, make your presentation on that?
All right, no problem. I'll bring Bill in here in a second. I'll just do a quick introduction as to the fact that, yes, we have been looking at this for a number of years. yes, we have been looking at this for a number of years because the market changed, uh, due to international pressures such as China sword and, you know, that's the terminology that China used for its efforts to reduce contamination in their processing streams. And they handled the bulk of the, uh, the recycling materials that are collected in the US go end up in China. So, uh, you know, because of that, uh, change to the market, the bottom dropped out of what was being paid for the materials because you, you didn't have a place to sell them anymore. Uh, when I say you, I'm talking about the, the processors, the republics of the world and, uh, some of these larger processing conglomerates, uh, had nowhere to sell the recycling. So, uh, instead of, uh, what, what we had been receiving funds at about $15 per ton prior to, uh, August of 2018, I believe it was when we got word of, uh, this huge market shift. Uh, and we had first discussions with council and talked about possibly ending recycling and a, a number of discussions. And we said, well, you know what? We're not going to end it. We're going to try and make it more efficient, try and do what we can to analyze what the market is. And I think that's a good measured approach. Uh, and through the years, and it's really been years now because that was 18 and 1 hour and 20, and we're approaching, uh, two years since, uh, that word, uh, we have reached a point where it's very clear that, uh, the market is not shifting back to the pay market where we would receive funds for what we, uh, processed. Now it's a, just the opposite. We are now having to pay ourselves to move that. And we pay the delta of $120 a ton from what it was. In other words, we were receiving 15, now we're paying 105. That's $120 difference to our budget per ton, which is quite impactful to the, uh, to the operation, the fiscal sustainability of the operation. Uh, so we've been evaluating ways to, uh, address that. And hopefully still provide virtually the same level of service and so forth, but it would involve one of two things. And that's either, uh, raising the rate quite significantly on the range of 35% on a monthly basis, going from $20.50 to $27.23 for just the base service that you receive now, not including yard waste. The yard waste would actually go from 10 to 12, 12, 12 and change. I'll just say 12 and change. Um, and, uh, you know, that's, uh, that's what the cost of service is really going to be to keep the current service. We also looked at outsourcing. And, uh, outsourcing may be a more viable option now than it has been in the past. Because it's just becoming a, a clearer differentiation in the cost for us to deliver this service as the cost of recycling has gone up versus the, uh, economies of scale that these larger operations and, you know, I, without naming names, these are the big guys in the country, um, that have huge operations and they do most of the work in St. Louis County and so forth. Uh, they can scale and, uh, really come in at somewhere around the price that we're paying right now and provide the same services we are. In other words, the solid waste, recycling, and, uh, even including yard waste, we're about the same as what we're paying now. That's our indication. So I'm going to let Bill take it from there and let him go through some of the methodologies involved and who he's spoken with and, and so forth. So if you can hear Bill, we're good to go.
Hey, Bill, before you start, can I just say one thing? I meant, I meant to say this when I started. Just again, understand, no, no decisions will be made on this tonight. This is the start of a discussion. It's just a presentation of information and a chance for council to ask questions of, uh, Russ and Bill and it will be a continued conversation. So just as you, as we go through this, just, uh, just keep that in mind. No, no decision on this, uh, will be made, uh, tonight. So Bill, sorry.
Okay. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Good. Good. Uh, uh, when we talked about this last week, I did do a cost of service study and you see that memo of where our budget is, our FY21 budget is, our total budget. And then we did a, uh, breakdown of how much of that money is associated with solid waste, how much associate with recycling services, our yard waste program and our depository. So in there you can see where we have, um, all those numbers down there. And in this year's budget, we're projected to have, be underfunded by, uh, $918,000. Okay? After we broke down our cost of service, then we start looking at, uh, options. Okay. And one of the things that we looked at was, you know, budget reductions. And, uh, we did look at, uh, you know, our budget reduction with, uh, without capital. And we would still have a rate increase if we, if we reduced all of our capital for one year, we would still have a reduced, uh, we would still have an increased rate. And then we took a look at the budget cuts and we, uh, we cut, uh, there was a recommendation of just cut 335,000. That would still require a rate increase. And then with those things, then we start looking at, uh, reduction in services. Okay? And with the reduction in services, we did look at eliminating curbside recycling. And, uh, even with that, we would, if we eliminated the whole recycling process, we would still wind up with a, uh, a rate increase. Okay? Because the, um, because we have to put the cost of the solid waste that would now go into a solid waste stream that was being recycled back into our calculations. So we would wind up with a, a rate increase there. Just a, just a slight one. Then we took a look at, uh, eliminating curbside recycling and closing the depository. And that itself, that basically would put us about at the rate we're at right now. Okay? It, it comes out to about $20.67 a month. So that would be totally eliminating curbside recycling and closing the depository. And then we looked again, we looked at, uh, eliminating all recycling, depository and, uh, stop yard waste. And that's the only one that really falls well below our current rate. It goes down about $17.95. And then, uh, we took a look at, um, re- uh, diversion of our, 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 uh, our, our waste stream, uh, taking things to, um, potentially St. Peters. We've already been in contact with St. Peters about, uh, their program. We're looking at if they have volume, if they have capacity for us. Okay? And it even with reduce, even with diverting our stream, we would still have a, a rate increase. And, uh, but what we did not calculate yet is the additional services, not the additional service, the additional operational cost it would cost us to haul to St. Peters or to divert the waste and go to with other, uh, providers that, that take glass and, uh, uh, single stream recycling. So we've looked at a multitude of, of avenues. Uh, all of them require a increase, um, in, in the rate, uh, except for the one if we eliminate all services, uh, the, our estimated cost to eliminate the processing. When I say eliminate the processing, that's the cost associated with $105 right now. That would take us down to about $23.80. But that figure does not include the increased operational cost for increasing our, our compactor, increasing equipment on site at the depository and increasing our hauling cost to haul it offsite and, and things of that nature. So that number would actually go, go up, uh, probably significantly, significantly because we would have to purchase larger, uh, containers and a larger compactor to, to, uh, because we'd have to be hauling every single day, multiple times to get to, uh, to, uh, new facilities. Uh, so that's where, really that's about where we are. And then we did look at, you know, of course, outsourcing. Uh, we looked at several, several adjacent communities and their contracts and, um, did talk to a couple haulers and, uh, basically they felt that they could take over our services uh, with once week trash, once a week recycling, uh, include yard waste and the twice weekly bulky for about the same rate that we are right now. Okay? And maybe a little bit less depending on how we, uh, structure the contract. So those were the things we're doing. The biggest thing that is, is, that's creeping up, creeping up on us right now is our capital cost. We've been kicking our replacement of our, uh, sanitation trucks down, down the alley for quite some time, several years now. It's sort of catching up to us. And in our, uh, proposed, uh, capital budget, you know, we're buying two to three, uh, sanitation trucks for the next five years to replace, to replace our fleet. And as I told you, I think last week, uh, two weeks ago, we had 50% of our trucks down, uh, our route trucks. So we have six route trucks and three of them were down last week. Uh, so they're getting to the point where they absolutely have to be replaced. Uh, we can't avoid that. So that's where we are. Um, if you have any questions, let me know. Um, uh, one of the things, uh, uh, Councilmember Ward asked me last week was about the lifespan of, uh, some landfills around here, uh, reached out to them. Uh, our, our solid waste goes to what's called a Champ landfill, which is at 270 and 70, has a 60-year life expectancy. Uh, there's two in Illinois, another, uh, holler goes to one in Madison and then one in Marissa. One has a 14-year life expectancy and the other one has a 40-year life expectancy. So I think as far as solid waste goes, we have places to go for, you know, next, the next 50 to 60 years for sure. So those, uh, if anybody asks questions, um, I, I can go from there. And then one of the things that in my memo that we did talk about also is the St., uh, St. Louis County, uh, Waste Management Ordinance. Uh, we did talk to John about that. We looked into it and, uh, eliminating recycling, basically we'd probably be in violation of that ordinance and, um, we probably have to take, uh, talk to the county about that, you know, and, uh, uh, not sure if they would allow us to eliminate that and not follow their ordinance.
It, because of the fact that the county has, uh, an ordinance that is overarching here, uh, that requires a certain level of services, uh, be provided by the city and that includes curbside pickup currently in the ordinance. We are left with basically two options. One is to provide similar to what we do right now. And that will involve an increase to the rate. The other option, and they were both up there just two, two seconds ago. Freddie had it up and I think he took it down here. But the other option is, uh, the, um, is outsourcing. And whether, uh, that's a direction that city council would, uh, be interested in considering. That's to be determined by council.
All right. John, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, I, I did, Mayor. I, I think Bill, you know, the sort of understated the situation with respect to the county ordinance. Um, we can go talk to St. Louis County. I can pretty much assure you that St. Louis County is going to say that we are in violation of that ordinance and that we are subject to that ordinance. I say that because years ago, we, I spoke to the county councillor, um, who was running the St. Louis County Waste Management Operations, if you will, or overseeing compliance. And he took issue with the fact that we did not comply with the bulky trash pickup. Admittedly, that's pretty low on the, the, the priority list, if you will. But their position back then was we were in violation of that ordinance. Um, and that we needed to come into compliance. They elected not to take any action against us. In other words, litigate it. I argue that as a separate governmental body, we are not strict, in strict compliance, don't have to be in strict compliance with the county ordinance, particularly when it comes to matters of, uh, that are not directly related to public health safety. One could argue that the bulky trash pickup is not a matter of public health safety. It's certainly a nice factor to have, asset to have, whatever one characterizes it. Um, but a yard waste, I think, is entirely different situation. I am absolutely confident that St. Louis County will tell us we're in violation. Um, and I don't want to predict what would happen if we had to litigate that issue. I'll just state publicly that, um, I would not want to be involved. I, I would not want us to get involved in that litigation.
And that would be if you stopped the curbside.
We really can't eliminate the necessities.
I, I talked over you, John. I'm sorry. I think you just said it there. That would, we'd be in violation if, if we eliminated curbside recycling. Okay. All right. I'm sorry. I,
And that's, that's why I was emphasizing that we're really left with two choices and both of them provide to the level of the county requirement.
Understood. Bill, in, in St. Louis County, and I, I just don't remember, are we the only municipality who has our own sanitation department? Do you know off the top of your head? It's a more curious question.
Right. No, the other one that's, the one that's like us is University City. And they're, they're going through, uh, a rate study right now. They're having some of the same issues we're having. Okay? Uh, we compared notes the, um, on Monday and they're very similar to us. Uh, City of Brentwood, they do it in-house, but it's a little bit different because they use sales tax. Oh, um, uh, monk charge their residents. And then there's some other, uh, smaller communities like Valley Park. Does it, they do it in-house with department amongst other things. Uh, so, so really, um, in St. Louis County, us and U-City are the most similar and have the most robust, um, operations.
Understood. And in terms of the, uh, the outsourcing rates, I think you had formal conversations with some of the, some of the contractors and just, and they felt that, you know, the rates we have not holding you to it would be adequate to provide the, uh, trash, curbside recycling and yard waste service?
Yes, because we looked at, you know, we talked to the contractors, then we took a look at the two, uh, other municipalities that are contracting that were most, uh, um, compared to, and their, their rates are very similar to ours and some of them are above ours and they contract out also. And one is, one is just under us. Are there, one's like $21 and the other one's like $23 right now a month. So it'd be very close to our, our existing rate.
How, how would they handle against, I'll be in a two-part, how, how do they do the yard waste? Containers, bags or?
It, it, it's different by community. Uh, one community just allows bags. One community allows bags, cans and disposable containers. Uh, so it's, it's how you write your specs and, and how we would do that. And one community has a, you're allowed a certain amount of yard waste per pickup. And another community allows unlimited amount of yard waste per pickup. So I think that's where you see the cost differential between the two.
All right. All right. That's all I've got for, for right now. I'll go to council. Uh, Nancy, you're, you're first.
Thank you. So, um, I actually emailed, uh, Tim Fitch today about, uh, the county mandate and, um, he was going to have his staff look into it and also, um, ask questions about it with the, um, the county Waste Management Department, whatever it's called there. And he asked me if, um, if we wanted him to pursue some kind of legislation with county council that would allow us to opt out of the, uh, single stream curbside recycling program because of, of this. I also asked him, because it was, I mean, for lack of a better term, an unfunded mandate from the county, if there were any funding assistance from the county to help offset, um, the costs, um, just as a matter of argument, you know, of all the various alternatives that we're considering right now. So I, I emailed him back and said I would talk to you all to see if we wanted him to consider, um, some sort of change in, in the leg- sort of change in, in the legislation, um, where Kirkwood could opt out of the specific language for curbside recycling. I also asked him if we were to, um, shorten the list of various items that would go into this, uh, single stream carts, would we still be in compliance? Let's say we, you know, um, disallowed a newspaper or who knows what, uh, the heavier items, glass, would that still, would that meet the current mandate? So those were those two questions. And I, I, I said I would talk to you all to see if you wanted, um, to him, wanted to have him consider, um, introducing legislation with county council if, if we wanted to keep it, try and keep it in-house. Um, so there's that. Um, one thing, Bill, I, I was somehow under the impression that our yard waste, um, aspect of the program was, um, self-sustaining. That's not true?
It, it, it depends on the year. Okay. Uh, we have not raised our yard waste bag uh, prices in a while, but our price of the bags has increased. And uh, with this, with this year, I looked at it and to be totally sustainable, we would have to have a increase of about, uh, it was a little bit over a dollar to, uh, to per bag to, uh, meet that.
For bad?
Okay. Right. Per, 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 per package of bags. Because if you, when we did our, when we did our rate, it's, when we did our rate study for everything, we looked at the, the yard wa, the yard waste program also, and it was recommended to go from $10.50 for a package of five to $12.20, 27 cents for a package of five. And in our specials, we have not increased our specials, uh, uh, cost in years. And we, we went from $20 to $25 in all of our calculations. So we have an increase in sanitation rates across the board for uh, rear yard, a curbside, um, yard waste and our special pickups. That's what we have in all of our calculations.
Okay. So well, Bill, taking this, um, curbside recycling out of the mix and the depository, I mean, do you, is, is, do you feel like the sanitation department is more or less stable or it's really the costs and everything are just kind of, sort of, we need, we really need to rethink the whole program in general?
Well, if we, if we can, if, again, if we go and we eliminate the curbside program and the depository, uh, basically our rate would go to, uh, based on our numbers right now, our rate would go to $20.67. So it would be a slight increase over our current rate with reduction in that, a full reduction in that service and elimination of the, of the depository. Okay?
Right. But we wouldn't be doing maybe the, the, the green thing as far as recyclables. It would be going into a landfill instead of actually trying to recycle those items.
Correct. And we increased, we increased our, our landfill, uh, cost by the, we do about 4,200 tons a year. So we put that cost back into, if we didn't do recycling, we put that back into the landfill cost. And that's where we get a little bit of an increase in operational cost.
Right. Um, so, um, if we were to convert to outsourcing, then sanitation equipment would maybe be resold for, I don't know how many tens, hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, sanitation personnel, would they possibly be able to, to be absorbed, um, once things normalize after this coronavirus stuff? Like into the water department or?
I would say, I would say, I'm going to answer the first one because the first one's easier. Okay. The, um,
Yeah.
The assets would be liquidated and whatever money we get from the assets would just go back into the, uh, the city's funds. Okay. We would liquidate all of our, uh, our equipment. As far as the staffing, um, I, that's a bigger, that's a bigger discussion. Uh, you know, I don't think we can absorb them into all of our departments. Uh, there's, there's skill, there's skill levels and stuff of that nature. Okay. Um, so I mean, that's, that's a, that's a much bigger discussion, um, about what we do with them because I think Russ and I've had these discussions that we might even too sure if the general fund can support absorbing 12 additional people.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I, and I'm very aware that this is a very sensitive issue and I love our trash guys and I know that the rest of the, uh, citizens in Kirkwood just love those guys. They are so good. You've got them so well-trained. Um, so, um, I, I think, oh, as far as, I'm not sure if Baldwin also maybe limits the list of things in their curbside single stream so that, I don't know that, you know, retaining any of this in-house is still a possibility. But I, I have heard that Baldwin limits what, um, residents can put in their curbside carts for single stream. So, um, I, uh, I guess that's all the questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Maggie?
Uh, first of all, Bill, thank you for doing all this work and all the, the research and the work that you've done in the last couple of weeks and every, all the other time. Um, is there a recycling depository anywhere else, marginally locally?
Uh, I think that U-City has one, but other than that, there's a lot of, um, you know, uh, not within Kirkwood, but there's a lot of schools that have, uh, cardboard recycling at, that, where you can go to a couple of schools around, uh, the area. Uh, but other than that, you know, there's, there's, the only other place to take, uh, recycling is the, is the, the Murph in St. Peters right now. And, uh, they have some drop-offs, you know, Republican, uh, probably has some drop-offs that we haven't looked at yet, but probably in the area where you can drop off materials.
I was just thinking, if we stopped doing recycling, but we retain everything else, including the depository, then those of us that are, and there are many of us that are hardcore recyclers, I'm happy to take my box of cans somewhere. Is there someone for me, somewhere for, that we can send people to set, take their newspapers, et cetera?
We would definitely, if we went that route, we would definitely, uh, set up a, uh, contact with other organizations and see where the closest and most available, uh, drop-offs are at.
Okay. Great. Um, also you talked about if we do sell it off, um, selling the trucks, what, would we also sell the bins? What would we do with the bins?
Uh, well, it, I guess it gets to, when you say bins, are carts that are curbside carts?
Yeah, I'm sorry, carts.
Well, that depends. If we stay, if we, if we eliminate recycling, we would still keep our carts. Okay. Um, and, uh, you know, one of the options that we talked about because the trash would increase, we could, people could have two carts for trash then. Okay? Uh, so that's sort of what the, the, the thought is right now, uh, because you're going to increase your trash, you would just use two carts.
Okay.
And I think, I think she was asking about if we were outsourced, what would we do? If we sold off all our trucks, would we sell off the carts? No, we would not.
Okay.
No, we, okay. No, we would not because I believe that if we outsourced, outsourced it, we would keep our carts and that actually helps us reduce some of our cost in the monthly fee. Because if we had a, a contractor come in, they would have to provide all carts. Okay. And that cost, of course, would be passed on to us.
Sure. Okay. Um, and then I'm wondering along the line of what Nancy was talking about, um, could it, is it possible, does this happen before that, in a, if we do decide to sell, um, could we do some negotiation with whoever we sold to, to consider hiring our guys?
I'm going to leave that up to, uh, that, we have two types of contracts. Okay. One is just a pure, um, outsourcing of the, of the, uh, program. Okay. Which is a very easy contract. Uh, the other contract is where we're sort of like selling the business and the asset and the employees. And that's a bigger contract that John would have to be involved in. And, um, but could it be done? It could be done, I would say.
Okay.
Would they, would they need the extra staff? Do they want the extra staff? That's, that's, that's part of the negotiations.
Sure. Sure. Um,
Mind if we went that way, we'd have to put it out to bid. It's not just negotiating with an individual company. You have to go and bid it out. And of course, you could put within the bid specifications, some of the things that you're talking about.
Okay. Okay. Um, shoot, oh, uh, I, I don't have a lot of, uh, um, confidence in our, some of our citizens, some of my neighbors, honestly, um, of that they would only put cardboard in there or that they would not put cardboard in there. Our, I see the darndest things go in those, in those bins that have no business being in those bins. So, um, or carts, sorry. Um, so I, I don't have a lot of confidence that that's going to work. It's still going to be contaminated, only it's just going to be contaminated more. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a heads up, as I said, this is the first conversation. We've only got 10 minutes left. So, no, no, that's okay. We'll, we'll continue the conversation. So I just want to let everyone know in 10 minutes, we'll have to end this one, but it will, it will be continued. So, Ellen, you're, you're next.
Okay. I'll try to go fast. Um, I guess, you know, my question is when we're looking at the, um, comparative prices for the outsourcing, some of those sound similar to what the, um, Finance Committee was actually talking about like years ago. And I wonder whether these are, uh, realistic prices that we would really be getting, going forward from the situation we're in, you, you know? Um, I almost feel like we need more specific and recent information before we go farther with it. Like, for example, yard waste, um, we must know the amount of yard waste that we pick up. And I think
Correct.
What generates tons more yard waste than DePere, for example. So I, I really want to know something about our, you know, our quantities of yard waste and also recyclables because I think we do, you know, have a lot of tons of that, whether an outsourcer is really going to take it for, for what we think. Um,
If I could, I know where you're going with that, Ellen. I, I really feel that we need to look at per caps, not gross tonnage because the pricing is based on a per capita basis. Therefore, the, the amount of waste generated per cap is really what, what is considered by these, uh, outsourced vendors.
Well, I guess what I'm thinking is we would generate more maybe than other areas per cap, you know, each per capita unit of yard waste is probably a lot higher. I, I don't, you know, because then if it doesn't work out though.
I don't know that, I don't know that that's true. I, I don't know.
Well, you know, we, we don't need to,
That's what I'd want to know.
We don't need to get in, into whether it's true or where it is. I, I think we, obviously if we were going to investigate this, we, we would get, this would be set out for bid and we get, we would get specific, you know, specific costs.
Okay.
These are based on just general conversation that, that
Yeah.
So.
Um, what about downtown? You know, there's a certain amount of trash that gets removed from those outdoor containers. And then there's that little trash cooperative where there really isn't room for, you know, commercial vehicle to get in. I mean, would we, how would we handle all that?
That, that would all be put in the specifications. If we want to continue those services, we would put those in the specifications, just like servicing, servicing city buildings. If we got rid of sanitation, we would have to have our building serviced also. And that would all be in the specifications.
And like the parks or what? Okay. All right. So we would, you know, the, I guess a lot of my questions are really, you know, what would it really look like for us, um, specifically with all that we do, that we do want? Because we wouldn't be able to do like some of the sanitation ourself. Right? I mean, if we go this way, we wouldn't be hauling anything at all. We wouldn't be doing downtown or parks. Just wanted to get some clarity on that. And then, um, do we have any idea how the salaries and benefits, um, compare between, I, I feel like our sanitation workers are, um, I'm, I'm glad, you know, I think they're kind of, uh, maybe treated better because they're in with a lot of other city employees. And I'm not really sure, uh, how the sanitation companies themselves who are mainly hiring only, you know, sanitation workers, how do they pay? And, and how are their benefits? Do we know anything about that?
Well, I would probably defer to, uh, Georgia a little bit on that because when they went through the analysis for, uh, our pay rate studies and stuff like that, they did use comparables. Uh, but I, I do not know anything about the private sector's benefits or hourly rates at this time.
Okay. Well, I guess, you know, that would be something. And just going along with what other people have mentioned, um, and I, I understand what, um, what Russ was saying about absor, you know, the difficulty of absorbing 12 full-time people into the, the general fund. But we could consider whether there's some work that they could be, uh, that they would be able to be trained to do quickly that would mean something we were not paying contractors for. I don't know. I don't know if that's just pie in the sky, something that I would be interested in. And that's all, I guess, that I would ask for, that I'd like to know more about. Thanks.
Thanks. Uh, Mark?
I'll try and keep this quick. I know we're, we've got five minutes left. Um, it seems to me that if we want to keep the services that we currently have for our citizens, uh, it looks like outsourcing might be a viable financial option. The, the part that you had up, Bill, showed five years of projections. Um, I don't know if we received that or not. Um, but obviously it's a big difference, uh, keeping it in-house versus outsourcing. And, um, I want to say maybe, uh, one of the council members mentioned that the Finance Committee had talked about it a couple of years back and about, you know, the option of outsourcing back then. And we decided that we wanted to keep it in-house, even though it might be a little more expensive than doing it. But, um, it seems like, you know, the increases on that chart, uh, for those five-year projections, those are pretty stiff increases if we kept them in-house. Um, combine that with the threat of, you know, being, uh, outside of the, uh, camp, um, their mandate, uh, which is unfunded. And I don't know, you know, the counties, but not as strong as ours. So to try and find money from them might be very difficult. It might be that, uh, that outsourcing is a, is a practical but unfortunate solution for us. So. Though I, like I said, Bill, if we haven't gotten that, uh, five-year projection, that would be nice to have. Thank you. That's all.
Uh, Wallace?
Well, let me say a couple of things first. Um, my neighbors are incredibly responsible and would never co-mingle, uh, trash and recycling. They're respectful of the planet also. Um, uh, and I'd also, we, we need to discuss the rules of filibuster during work sessions too. Um, it is important to me that we at all costs maintain our autonomy and, and we get that through self-service. I know that it may short-term often look like free enterprise is, is, is going to be the most beneficial to, to residents of the community. But in my experience, governmental, uh, trade-offs to that have, have disadvantaged the, the, uh, the, the residents of, of any particular, uh, location. Um, in terms of the, uh, yard waste, you know, U-City has for a long, long time, uh, taken their grass clippings and their leaf, uh, and mulched it in and allowed residents to pick it up. We did that for some years here in Kirkwood. And if we could find a location to do that in, it, it probably would, would offset any of our costs by just doing that rather than paying to put it into, uh, a, a retail outfit that then sells it back to our, to our own residents. So I think we ought to, we ought to put that in the mix there somehow because we've got some locations, you know, we were in Valley Park and because of the flood plain, we had to come out of there. But I think we've got some other alternate locations where we could pull that off. So, uh, that would be it. Yeah. I think it's important that we, uh, we protect our, our employees. Um, I'd prefer to, to refer to them I prefer to refer to them as sanitation employees rather than trash men, but that's just me.
Kara?
All right, let's see how quick I can do this.
Next meeting, we're going to, we'll reverse it totally. So.
Good, because I'm not going to let you forget, Tim.
I know that.
I do want to kind of echo what Councilmember Ward just said is, you know, we can say we're keeping the same service if we outsource, but we're not going to be, we're giving up our autonomy. We're giving up our history. If you close our recycling thing, it's, it's more than just saving our citizens $30, $40 a year. It's a lot of autonomy we're giving up. But I do want to ask, when was the last time that we've made a substantial hike in rates, you know, beyond the 3% annual?
Last October, that's when we had our biggest rate increase in a long time. And before that, it was in 2016 and before that it was in 14, I think.
Okay. So about every two years probably is kind of how that's been trending. Okay. And then the, those outsourcing numbers you provided, Bill, that we looked at earlier, that was, we'd close our recycling depository entirely with those numbers, correct?
Correct. We would be out of the business totally.
Okay, okay. And that's all I have for now. Thank you, guys.
Very good. So what we'll do is when we have our next work session, I, I don't know when that'll be, but we will have one. Well, this will be our first topic. It'll give each of us time to digest what we got tonight, ask questions, think of more things, and we can, you know, send them to Russ and Bill and then be, be prepared for another, you know, another discussion and see where, where that discussion goes. So with that, this work session is adjourned and we will be back in about nine minutes for our regular meeting. And that's a new link. So.
Hi, guys.
Kara, I thought you were going to filibuster. What are we doing?
I ran out of time.
Oh, there she's still here.
Not today, Wallace, sorry.
All right.